The school committee meeting, October 23rd, 2025, 6:00 PM. Steph, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
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 Here. So, we will start with the report of the school committee chair. Really not a report, it's, I just want to take a few minutes, since this is my last school committee meeting. I just want to express... That the door shut. My heartfelt thanks to all the teachers, administrators, school nurses, paraprofessionals, clerks, parents, and especially our students. Thank you for your support throughout our years on this committee. You've all helped us and me grow and become a better committee member. I truly appreciate this journey with all you guys, and I look forward to watching your continued success with the new committee. I think we've made great strides together up here, but there's still a lot more work to be done. I hope to continue working with our schools. I'm running for selectmen, and I believe we've made progress and strengthened on our schools, and I feel leaving, I'm leaving the district in a better place than when I got here, I hope. To all the parents, teachers, students, support staff, please continue to challenge this committee, and future ones, to do the hard work necessary to provide the best for our students. We have many, we have many of the right pieces in place to keep improving, and I know we will. Let's continue to focus on the whole student and help every child reach their full potential. I want to thank Tommy, Ryan, John, and Steph, they're tireless workers, who truly care about this district and what's best for our kids. It's been an honor to serve beside them. And lastly, I want to thank Superintendent Hashem. He, he's not only a great friend, but he's, he's a great partner. I've enjoyed working with you these last years, and thank you all, it's been an honor to serve with you guys. Also, please, remember to vote, civic duty, all that stuff, but it's, it's important that you get out and vote, because if you get out and vote and come back and complain later, really, sometimes falls on deaf ears, so. There is early voting this Saturday, it's at the library, so hopefully you'll take advantage of that. Lastly, the Saugus Town Hall is going to be, Tom Anger and Scott Crabtree invites the kids to Saugus Town Hall for Trick or Treat. It's Thursday, October 30th, from 3:00 PM to 4:30 PM at the Saugus Town Hall. Dress up in your best costume, and there'll be candies and candy and treats there. I think everyone there will be dressed up. I think Ryan is dressing up, so he'll be there. That's it for me, but I'd like to turn it over to these guys, I know it's going to be Ryan's last meeting, and I know, hopefully, these two guys will be back, because they, they truly care, and they truly make a difference.
Maybe we should say our goodbyes for the end. I'll do it that way.
Yeah, sure.
All right, but can I just say something?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
I just want to talk, I know, we've still got some things in front of us, some things that we're still working on. I know the bus situation has, was touchy, we sent a survey out, and not a whole lot of people responded, but I do see that people think that the buses are the ones that create the traffic. But if anybody remembers correctly, we had six buses last year, and the traffic was still horrendous. So, I think we, we focus our energies in the wrong spot sometimes. Buses, yeah, they'll help, but it's not the problem with traffic. So, what we need to concentrate on is the safety for the kids. We need to concentrate on crossing guards and flashing lights at those, at the crosswalks. So, we've had, what, two, two people get hit, two kids get hit in the last month or so? So, what we all need to focus on is safety, not, not the cars. The only way to get rid of traffic is to take every third car off the road, and that's not going to happen. So, we have to get around it by, by worrying about safety, and that's where we should be focusing our efforts. And I hope the next committee will, we, again, we don't control the crosswalks, we don't control any of that stuff, but I hope the next committee will work with the selectmen to, to get some stuff done and get some, make these, the roads safer for everybody.
Yeah, I think that the superintendent has something on that when he gets to his, his time.
Oh, sorry. No, I always seem to steal stuff.
We have next to be part of the superintendent.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
I, I wasn't going to start with this, but it's a great segue, so. I did meet with a representative from Safe Roots to School. I met with her, I want to say, it was before the last school committee meeting, and I had her meet with my principals today, it was a Google Meet, but, so she's going to coordinate with the three principals to have some surveys conducted on modes of transportation that the, the students are, are using. She, they're going to do for us a traffic study of each of the three schools at arrival and dismissal, and, hold on, I think there was something else. Family surveys, arrival, dismissal, and bike sa, like bike safety and pedestrian safety education, and units like that. So, we are meeting with them, we are partnering with them, and it's, that's already in the works. And so, we met today with a representative from Safe Roots to School and, and the three principals, so they're, they're taking it from there. So, I did want to mention that. We also started a budget process for FY '27, so the principals already have that going on.
Yeah, I, I just, that's another thing I just want to reiterate with the public and, and parents and caregivers and everyone out there, a budget process starts now, not in May, when we're at town meeting. It starts now, so come to the meetings, email us, or email the, the school committee on your needs and what do you think, because when you start coming to meetings, and it's already been voted on and passed, it's hard to go back and change that, so.
Again, different line. I have, I'm going to be scheduling, the school, next school committee meeting is going to get scheduled for November 6th, which is the Thursday after the election, at 6:00 PM. It's an organizational meeting where the new committee will select a chairperson and a vice chair, decide meeting dates and whatnot, but I'm going to, I'll take care of scheduling that and posting that meeting, but it will get, it will get done, and I just want...
Just make sure, just make sure they get sworn in before they do it.
Yeah, but they'll, they usually get sworn in on the...
Sometimes, like...
No, they'll do it here, they'll do it, she'll come here.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
All right, I do, I do want to say thank you to the board, I, I know you're going to do it at the end, but I do want to thank all five members of the board, you've been very supportive of, of the children in our schools, and I do appreciate that, and you don't necessarily hear that enough. Don't take it from me as superintendent, take it from me as a resident of town, I do think all five of you care deeply about the students, and I think it shows, and that's why when there's some passion that gets shown, whether it's, you know, happiness or anger or whatever shows up, that's why, it's because you're, you five have been invested in the schools, and I don't think the, that everybody fully understands how much time the five of you in this position gave to the students and the families of Saugus. So, for me, I just wanted to say I appreciate it. For two of you, good luck, and for the three, for the people who aren't coming back, John, I'm looking at his empty seat, and Ryan, and, and Vinny, thank you for everything, and best wishes, and stay in touch. Thank you, that's my...
I feel like you just signed my yearbook right there.
Yeah, I do. Thank you.
Tommy, remember the pit.
It'll be Facebook for instance.
We have a second read, under all business, we have second read of policy, DBG, Budget Adoption Procedures, and we'll need to vote on this. This is a district budget adopted by the school committee at a cost center level. It should represent appropriate levels of transparency, transparency for the committee to oversee goal implementation while allowing administrative day-to-day work. Cost centers will be agreed on by the committee and administrators, all revenues are subject to adoption by the school committee, budget adoption. Basically, I think what, what this is saying is, we're still going to have line item bu, we're still going to have a line item budget like we have all the time, but you're able to use the cost centers, except for salaries, you'd be able to move the cost centers around, which I think at the end of the day will help with what we try to do at the end of the year. When we have money left over in line items, we're moving things around, we're doing things like that. It'll actually be the same, but it actually give the district and the, the principals more flexibility on how they administer their budget. So, do I, do I have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add to the, the, just to repeat, a lot of the policies that we're looking at specifically, the, the finance policies tonight, and, and the, and the financial policies tonight, these are ones that were written by MAS-C, the Mas Association of School Committee.
Correct.
And in many cases, we're one of, I know for some of these, we're one of, like, one or two districts in the state that do it in alternative ways, so it's, it's more streamlined way, it's, it's the more accepted way, and the concern that we discussed was that there's still basically everything that we're used to with the budget, in terms of oversight and accountability is still there, but it just gives a lot more flexibility, you know, on behalf of, of the district. So, just to start off, I'll make a motion to adopt budget, I'm sorry, Budget Adoption Procedure Policy, DBG.
Chair seconds, any questions? Roll.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Master Polo?
Yes.
Whitridge?
Yes.
Yes. Next, we move on to DBJ, which is, all requests for transfers between cost centers, as approved during annual budget deliberation, must be submitted to the school committee for approval as part of the school business office's quarterly report at the business meeting of the school committee. So, all this is saying is that we will get the reports on any transfers quarterly, and be able to look at those and be able to make recommendations off those.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Chair seconds, any questions?
Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Polo?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next one is just grants proposals and special projects. In accordance with state law, all grants and gifts the district must be reviewed and accepted by the school committee before they're used, before expenditure. The superintendent shall ensure the district has and follows written set of procedures in grant administration that aligns with state and federal laws and regulations. Note, the district business office must have a state and federal grant manual with procedures aligned with the state and federal law and regulations in order to comply with state granting requirements. To, the approval of such document is not subject to the school committee, the administration should ensure the documents are being forwarded to the school committee.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Chair seconds, any questions? Roll.
Yes.
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 So, the last one is, yes.
I'm going to vote yes again as well.
Yes, sorry. Acoustics are bad in here. No, I apologize. So, next one, we have the December one, DEC, Federal Funds Supplement, Fund Supplement, not to supplement policy. The Saugus School District is committed to utilizing, utilizing federal funds to supplement instructional programs funded by local, state, and other sources, as required by law and regulation. Federal funds will be used to complement and extend district-funded programs, not to take the place or supplant programs previously funded by the district, except as provided by the granting program. The superintendent or designee will ensure the federal grants are distributed appropriately and that associated record-keeping and reporting complies with required guidelines and mandates.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Chair seconds, any questions?
Yes.
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 Yes. Under new business, we got the first read of policy, GBED, Tobacco Use on School Property by Staff Members. Use of any tobacco products, including but not limited to cigarettes, cigars, little cigars, chewing tobacco, pipe tobacco, snuffing, electronic cigarettes, electronic cigars, electronic pipes, other similar products that rely on vape or aerosol within the school buildings, school facilities, or school grounds, or school buses, or at school-sponsored events by any individual, including school personnel, is prohibited at all times. Staff members who violate the policy will be referred to their immediate supervisor.
Mr. Chair, it's cross-referenced in one of the A policies, that's why we're putting it in there.
Okay.
So, in the A policies that we went through with the MAS-C, it cross-referenced a policy that also included staff that we didn't have listed specifically for staff.
Okay, so...
So, it's, it's part of a...
It's an A policy for students, a G policy for staff.
Yeah, and it's, it's cross-reference in both the track, in both the tobacco-free school policy and the tobacco products in school premise prohibited policies.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to...
Well, it's first read.
Oh, it's first read, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I, my bad.
What's that? Oh, yeah, I was going to say, so, we do a first read, but then the next committee has to do a second read?
Unless you want to waive the first...
But you don't have to vote out, you don't have to vote on the second read, you can out, you can, you can table it if you want, you can bring it before the committee.
We can't, you can't...
We can waive the second read.
You can waive the second read if you want.
Do you want to make a motion?
Any of those things can be done.
I'll make a motion to waive the second read.
Chair seconds, we do a roll.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Master Polo?
Yes.
Mr. Whitridge?
Are we voting to waive, waive and adopt, or just to waive?
Wave, and then we have to vote to adopt.
Yes.
Yes, so we waived the second read, now we just need a motion to accept it.
Make a motion to approve.
Chair seconds.
Yes.
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 Thank you, good, good, good catch on that, thank you.
Well, so the next committee has to...
No, you're right, no, no, you're right. Thank you.
There you go, guys, it's going to be decided. We ain't riding down that road already.
FY '26 Budget Amendment Number One, to place FY '26 budget into two cost centers, salary and non-salary, do you want to?
So, this follows the policies that you just adopted to place the Saugus Public School budget into two cost centers, as is done in most of the Commonwealth. So, you have a salary cost center and a non-salary cost center. What I've given you tonight on the cover sheet is what I'm asking you to vote on, and if you look at the budget behind it, the line items, there is absolutely no change from what you voted in June. Okay, so that is the budget as it was in June. What this will allow is, the first budget amendment typically is all the salary changes from over the summer, the turnovers, the column movements. This year, it would include the three bargaining units, because the money sits in the adjust, annual wage adjustment line, and has to be allocated to every single line, okay? So, what this does is it allows me to do that without having to bring you that 45-page budget amendment, and, and basically you vote it, because you've already agreed to it, okay? It's in the contract. In the non-salary line items, it allows predominantly the principal at the complex, because she has the most lines, to pivot during the year, okay? So, if she sees maybe a, a need for more science supplies versus English supplies, and she wants to move the money around, she can. She will just contact me and say, please move the money between English and math, okay? So, that is the way it is done everywhere in the Commonwealth, except now in one other district besides us. And so, that gives really the principal the flexibility to pivot during the year based on her needs. What you will not see is using salaries to pay for anything in non-salaries, or non-salaries paying for a new position. If that happens, I come before you, and that would be a budget amendment, okay?
Does that include stipends? If they were going to offer a stipend, they could not take it out of the non-salary?
Stipends?
Yeah, where do stipends go?
Stipends are salaries.
All right, so they won't take that out of non-salary?
Yes, so that's all done, I mean, in every, every quarter, when I give the report, you will still get the whole thing, okay? So, you can follow along, and if there's been any increases in positions, you will absolutely know that. We don't increase positions, the only time we increase a position is a para, when an IEP dictates it, okay? But this will force us to work within the salaries, possibly to pay for that, or to come before you, okay?
Yeah, and I, I, just to, to jump on Mr. Whitridge, salaries can't go to non-salaries, and non-salaries can't go to salaries.
No, unless I come here for...
Yes, no, I just want, I just want to clarify that, because I think that's a, that's an important piece.
Yes. Okay, so when you vote it, and again, all through the year, this is what you're, I mean, this is what you'll get again, okay? With salaries and non-salaries marked next to it, so that you can see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number One.
Chair seconds, any questions?
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Master Polo?
Yes.
I'm actually, yes, yes.
Yes.
You're going to choose my last one?
You like that one?
Sure, no shit across.
Approval of bills dated October 23rd, 2025, in the amount of $800,000, $859,964.95.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, we do a roll, last one.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Master Polo?
Yes.
Whitridge?
Yes.
Mrs. Serena?
Yes. Must be our last time together.
It's all sentimental.
Approval of school committee meeting minutes for August 14th, 2025, executive session.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of school committee meeting minutes for August 14th, 2025, open session.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of school committee meeting minutes, October 16th, 2025, executive session.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of school committee meeting minutes, October 16th, 2025, open session.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And I think it goes to you. So, we're going to have the meeting minutes for this meeting, right? How do they get approved?
They just get recognized.
Mr. Chair, it's funny, because I asked, I was just thinking that same, wow, I'm really...
We do this every time. There's, there's one of the minutes we did, that there was never the right sequence of people available, and we've never...
The next committee just, they just recognize them.
You can vote to like... Just recognize them, don't vote on them.
Okay.
Yeah, we definitely don't have to vote.
Just sign my name.
Next, we have public comment. We have a teacher who's always here, if she'd like to say anything. Seeing no public comment, I will turn it over to the board.
I mean, I'll, I'll just say thank you for these, to all of you, for these two years. It has definitely been a learning experience. I hope to be on next panel, if not, I wish the next panel all the luck. But I will say, sitting on a panel with all these men, I was a little worried.
And John.
But each one of them, I will say, answered all my questions, never made me feel uncomfortable or stupid, or, they were always there when I had a question. And I will say, Ryan spent more time on me with this last negotiation, talking to me than his wife and his child, so I do appreciate all your help.
You're welcome. I have vacation with John anyway.
That you gave to me, I know all the numbers, from 133 to 222 to 333 to 555, so it's, it's all there, so, yep, we got it. Mike, it's been an absolute pleasure these last two years. Like I said, you, you are always responsive, great to work with, we've got more work to do if I get on, but it'll be good. But I just wanted to thank everybody. Polo, thank you very much for spending the time that you spent with me to sit down and go through your 42 binders. I truly appreciate it, to help me understand the financial piece a little bit more. So, thank you very much, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone, it's about six years, I cannot believe, I did the before and after look, I look like a second-term president on his last day, so I can kind of see it.
John wonders.
I, I, true, John, I have a full head of hair when you started.
You look great for 65.
I do, I look amazing for 65. When I first ran, I had a daughter who was about to enter the system, and I was concerned about it, and we took the long way around, I still have a daughter who's coming, tell the people on Facebook, I, I will have a child in the system, you can relax. But I feel so much better about, and I've lived in this town my entire life, I feel so much better about the school system, the, the path it's on, you know, working with such talented people over the last six years, I have full faith that, you know, this system is going to endure, and, and the children in this system are in very good hands. I just want to thank the, the families and the, and the parents and the voters and everyone who trusted me over the last six years to make decisions. I always try to, you know, make the, the right one, I, I use the expression, I, I don't know if it's a five to zero vote, or a, or a tie vote, but I always voted like I was the swing vote, and that my vote mattered, and in some times it did, and I just, I'm just so grateful for that, and I just want to thank everyone up here, I want to just thank Tom and Ben, especially the two chairman I've worked with, it is not an easy job, being on a school committee, I've worked with, I've been talking a lot with Stephanie and with John, and I see how much effort they put into every decision, and how much they research, and how much they swathe at this, and what about this, what about that, and, and people don't understand, I think, how hard these jobs are. I will tell anyone for the rest of my life, being on a school committee is the hardest job you will ever do, it is the most impactful job that you'll probably ever do, and there are so many backseat drivers, we've had so many people looking over our shoulders and telling us we're doing it wrong, and beating up on us, and you've seen, you know, I was talking to Tom the other day, and I saw something in the paper, someone taking credit for something, I was in the room when Tom did it, I'm like, I don't remember that other person in the room, do you? But this is what, you know, this is, this is the life, people will take credit for every good thing we do, and, and they'll blame us for all the bad, even if, if it happened 20 years before we were born, and that's just, that's just life. But I, I wish the next board well. If you need anything, call me, if you want to talk about 155 stuff, or 234, or whatever, you know where to find me. And, and again, just thank you, everyone, thank Mrs. McBride for taking our minutes and dealing with our, our temperament, and we always forget to tell her when the meetings are, and she runs in her bathrobe with her notebook, and she's good to go, that doesn't happen, I made that up.
And her pickleball racket.
Pickleball racket. In, in that COVID year, we told you we were going to have a couple extra meetings, and we have like 17 extra meetings a month, or whatever.
It was like every single week.
And, and Polo, thank you for, for, for everything, and, and Mike, thank you. I was just saying to someone the other day, if I could have started on school committee now, with all the work we put into it over the six years, it would be, it'd be amazing. So, I wish the next committee well, and thank you for everything you did, and thank you, and, thank you all.
Very good. Well, first I want to stop by saying today's breast cancer awareness day, and tomorrow night, the football team has their pink-out game for breast cancer slash senior night. That's tomorrow night at 6:00, I believe, starts?
I think it's 6:00.
Tonight is field hockey senior night.
Volleyball's got some...
Volleyball's got their pink-out game, right?
Yeah, their pink-out game, yeah.
So, everybody does a lot for breast cancer. And it honestly, I didn't really know what I was going to say today, but it just kind of, to jump on what you said about, this becomes your life, really, school committee, it really does, it consumes you. It consumes you, especially me working in town and stuff. It's, you know, I'm like synonymous with school committee. You know what I mean? It's like, so there's a lot that goes on. I mean, it's been so much in my life that's happened while I've been on this school committee. But you know, it's really important to me to really get these schools to a point where every kid has the best education. You know, I know we have, we have special needs kids, we have the kids in the high honor roll, then we have those kids in the middle, and those are the kids that we need to look out for, too. So that's, when I'm, when I'm satisfied, that's probably when I'll start running for school committee, when I'm satisfied that every kid's getting the education they're supposed to get. Because again, we work for the taxpayers, we work for the families in town. You know, we do our best to help the teachers out and help the staff out, but ultimately, education is our top priority. And I'm gonna say, over the last six years, give or take, I had a hiatus when my wife passed away. It was, I, it was in my blood to come back to school committee. It really was. I love fighting for the kids. I love working with different groups every time we come there. It's a, it's a different people on the committee, and I like that. You know, I've known Steph a while, and these two guys, I've known a long time, and we all did not agree. We didn't agree on a lot of things, but you know what? You gotta keep civil. So this is for the next committee, I'm gonna tell you right now, keep it civil and always respect each other's decisions, because they're not gonna be the same. They're not gonna be you. You get hired to be your voice, not somebody else's voice, not somebody in your ear. You're the voice for the, for the people. So you gotta stick to that. But I will say, I enjoyed my time here working with Mr. Serena as the chairman, and of course, like I said, Ryan, I've known him for forever. So we ran together, we did a lot of stuff together. So, yeah, and you're right, the schools, and it may not show to some people, but the schools are in a much better place, and you were a big part of that. So thank you very much. And Steph, I'm not even gonna say anything new, because I hope to see you on October 4th, November 4th. But no, it's been, it's been a pleasure working with you. Absolutely. So I love your passion. And like I said, sometimes we're passionate about different things, but that doesn't matter. We're passionate, you know? And you, Miss McBride, you're the best. If I was never on the committee again, I would miss you. I'd still come to the meetings just to see you. So, yeah, thank you very much for all you do. You really, like I said, you do a lot behind the scenes.
You remember the first meeting?
When you asked for a raise, yeah, I remember that.
I called your name like five different ways.
Absolutely. It wasn't just you, it was him. He was calling me wicker agent.
I have in my, in my phone is former chairman Woodbridge. I haven't changed that until you got back on, because I think it was either you or Dave Drews, someone called him Woodbridge. And it just stuck, and I thought, no.
You know, you know what the final straw was? I got an email one time from a guy. Okay, now my email, my name is in my email, and he butchered my name. It made me like Russian. He had like, there was no vowels in it, and I'm like, so I took his name and I butchered it, and I sent it back to him. I said, Mr. Malakalaka, you know? He never even picked up on it, you know? But that's, yeah, after a while, it gets a little, you know, because my name is there on paper. It's here.
Yeah, I just go by what.
But, yeah, so I want to thank all the parents, too. You said, a lot reach out to you, they call you, text you, corner you outside, it doesn't matter. And I'm always willing to listen. We're always willing to listen, you know? And do the best we can. Now, understand, you know, sometimes some parents will ask for something that, you know, we just can't do. You know what I mean? So we always look out for the best interest of the kids, and it's not one person up here I can say that does not. So just want to thank everybody. If I'm not back on the committee, I'll still come to the meetings, because like I said, I'm gonna miss it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. It's been a pleasure.
I apologize. I wanted to say thank you to the chairperson, too. How I could have forgotten to say thank you to you is beyond, because we're on the phone. My husband said to me, so who, who are you gonna fight with next year? I said, stop, stop. All kidding aside, any question I had many times at Dunkin' Donuts, he's, he's been there for me. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, it's, it's been my pleasure with these guys.
I forgot, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's been said by everybody, but you're very approachable. You made a lot of tough decisions, a lot of tough decisions, more than a lot of other superintents were willing to do. The easy thing is to come in and cut, 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 you know? But you, you've done things a little differently, and I think that's a really good start, and I think that you're, you're good for the district. Your morale and, you know, you're level-headed. So thank you very much, and it's been my pleasure to work with you.
Yep, very welcome.
And I liked doing the trivia that you put. Can you like forward me the newsletters if I give you my personal email? Yeah, I'll take care of it. Thank you.
Yeah, so like I said, this, it's been, it's bittersweet for me, I leaving these guys, because they're the best, and I don't think I have to say anything to Mike. I think he knows how I feel. We've been through a lot together, so wishing the next committee the best, and if you need anything, feel free to call me. I'll be around, so.
I'm gonna give it one last, you can't do that. You can't do that. All right.
Yeah.
My favorite is when Vinny calls you in the morning, and he's on an exit ramp, and kids are getting dropped off, and he's screaming at the parents, we're also making sure the kids, okay? And I'm like, are you all right? We're all.
Yeah, I, we, we talk a lot, so we do. And I want to thank Mrs. Andrews, it's been a pleasure, and Diane, it's been a pleasure. And Sue, I'll just see you down the pickleball courts.
Haven't seen you yet.
Yeah, well, I'm going. I'm just getting in shape. I don't want to embarrass myself.
He's gonna have the Serena for Selectment shirt on.
My grand, my uncle might have an old one. So.
Mr. Fisher?
Oh, yeah, and someone in the new committee has to make all the motions. I started making them. I got stuck with it.
Yeah, he did a good job.
So you're all gonna be sitting there, not knowing what to do. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.